Good evening. I want to welcome you to the August 2nd, 2021, meeting of the Pacifica Planning Commission. And before we turn to the agenda proper, I want to go ahead and read some preliminary notes about how we'll be conducting tonight's meeting. Specifically, this meeting will be conducted pursuant to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order N 0821, which suspends certain requirements of the Brown Act. This meeting is necessary so that the city can conduct necessary business, and it was permitted under the order as an essential governmental function. The assistant city attorney and city staff essential to the meeting will be video teleconferencing into the meeting, and there will be no physical location that's open to the public. The public can observe the meeting while sheltering at home via Zoom link as the primary means of participation, or via the cable channel 26 or live stream broadcasts as alternative methods of viewing the meeting. Participation via the Zoom link will enable the meeting to be observed live and will enable the public to speak during public comment periods. The Zoom link was published in the meeting agenda. Live public comments are being accepted at this meeting in place of emailed public comments. Public comments will be provided live by the English public utilizing the Zoom link to participate in the meeting. Utilize the raise hand function in the Zoom application on a computer, smartphone, or a tablet, or else enter star nine to raise your hand if you're dialing by phone. Please ensure your name is correctly entered in your Zoom profile so city staff may properly identify you when it's your turn to speak. Those dialing in by phone will be called to speak by the last four digits of their phone number as shown in the Zoom interface. With those preliminary notes kind of shared, I think we want to then move to the agenda proper. So I'll ask you to go ahead and get a roll call. Mr. Murdoch can help us with that.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Berman.
Present.
Commissioner Domarat.
Present.
Commissioner Godwin.
Present.
Commissioner Hauser.
Present.
Commissioner Lille. Commissioner Nebelen.
Present. Thank you. So we'll then move to the salute to the flag, and I'll ask Commissioner Domarat to use the salute, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation.
Thank you, Commissioner Domarat, and we'll move into administrative business. And the first item of administrative business is to approve the order of agenda. Is there a motion to approve the order of agenda? Commissioner Lille.
I'll make a motion to approve the order of tonight's agenda.
Thank you for the motion, Commissioner Berman.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the order of agenda. Can we please have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domarat.
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser.
Yes.
Commissioner Lille.
Yes.
Commissioner Nebelen.
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next item of administrative business is to approve the minutes. And we have two sets of minutes to approve this evening. We have minutes from the meeting of July 6th, 2021. We have also minutes for our meeting of July 19th, 2021. And we can, you know, depending on the pleasure of whoever it is that makes the motion, approve these minutes together as one item, or we can take them individually, or alternatively, if folks have got comments or concerns regarding the minutes, we can entertain those as well. So I'll go ahead and ask my colleagues for their pleasure with respect to matter. Commissioner Hauser.
Happy to make a motion to recommend both sets of minutes be approved.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Hauser to approve the minutes from our meeting of July 6th, 2021, and July 19th, 2021. Is there a second? Commissioner Domarat.
Second.
Motion in the second. We have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domarat.
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser.
Yes.
Commissioner Lille.
Yes.
Commissioner Nebelen.
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And I think then we've got a matter we just need to confirm. We've got a designation of liaison for the City Council meeting of August 9th, 2021 pertaining to the Lot 3 Harmony 1 appeals, and also on the same date, the text amendment 12021. And Commissioner Godwin, we have you down as having stepped into the breach on that. So I just want to, I guess, confirm that that's the case. Is that what we need, Mr. Murdoch?
Yes, Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Godwin, we still get to go on that?
I'm happy to do it.
Thank you, sir. Again, appreciate it. So Commissioner Godwin is the designated liaison for those matters. We'll then move to oral communication, and this is the portion of agenda that's available to the public to address the Planning Commission on any issue within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that's not otherwise on the agenda. The time allowed for any speaker will be three minutes, and Mr. Murdoch will ask you to kind of walk us through that, if you would.
Thank you, Chair. I have at least one hand raised at this time, so I will get us set up for oral communications. And the individual who had a hand raised, looks like that person has lowered the hand. If there's anyone that wants to speak, please raise your hand now and keep it up. All right, I see one hand from several hands now. We'll start with Mike Bernazza. He'll have three minutes. Please go ahead.
Deputy Director Murdoch and Commission, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Thank you for the time. Not necessarily good at this whatsoever. Today, I just wanted to discuss HPD, or at least, I guess, make a comment or create a discussion around it and what that means for our town. Given that the HPD designation or, you know, ordinance cannot be removed without, you know, a vote of the people, the variance is sort of the, and again, this has nothing to do with tonight's agenda. I want to make that clear. The reason I'm reaching out or making a discussion point is in regards to the determination of incompleteness from the Hillside Meadows and Lindemar Woods project. I think more specifically, the Lindemar Woods. So the, I guess, the purpose of HPD, and I'm already running out of time, is really to, you know, do several things. One that I, you know, think is important is, you know, I'll just read a part from section 9-4.2252. And is the intent of this section to discourage the development of ridge lines, however where a parcel has ridge lines that are the only buildable portion of that property, or where it can be demonstrated that the sensitive development of other portions of such a parcel would significantly frustrate the other purposes of this article. Then some development of such ridge lines may be permitted, provided most of the ridge line remains undisturbed, and such ridge line develop is of low profile, excuse me, minimal visual impact and utilizes a minimum of grading. And just directly to the plans that I've reviewed, and of course, I'm no expert. It seems that one, Lindemar Woods is on a full ridge line at the top of the Eucalyptus Forest, and it takes up the majority. So reading that, I think at the very least, you know, we'd have to keep, you know, basically 51% of that ridge line undisturbed. Not sure. I think you're allowed to comment, but that was something I certainly was interested in learning more about in terms of creating variances and so on and so forth. Beyond that, having a variance of such properties of privilege enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity and under an identical zoning classification, there really is no other example in order to permit a variance under Part 1 of Section 9-4, 304, or 3404.
Thank you, Mr. Bernazza. I'm going to go ahead and stop you there since we're three minutes.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Next, we have Cindy Abbott. Please go ahead.
Hello, good evening. Cindy Abbott, Sharp Park. Having just read the both sets of the July meeting minutes that were just approved by the Planning Commission, want to note that I'm really quite concerned with the pushback that's taking place with regard to broadly communicating and clarifying the really important Hillside Preservation District. We can find the article. We know what it is. Article 22.5, Chapter 4, Title IX. But what I believe the public is looking for and Planning Commissioners have stated that they're looking for is more information than just pointing us in the direction of that publicly available document. And as we just heard, there are concerns about projects that are coming up with regard to the HPD. This is something that's been part of Pacifica's heritage for decades, and it seems to be something that right now is looking to be whittled away at or even very dramatically being impacted from projects up at Harmony 1, Aloney Point, to the Higgins Projects, to even tonight's. And I just really want to stress how important it is to have the conversation that Commissioners asked for at the last meeting. And I hope that that continues to be asked for, and staff will hopefully begin to understand that for transparency and for public understanding, this is a really important conversation that needs to be had. And I just hope that there'll be continued requests from Planning Commissioners and the public, and maybe even City Council members, so that we can get staff to understand how important this conversation is to the community. So thank you for doing more or considering doing more than just publishing an FAQ on Connect with Pacifica. It's just really not enough. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Abbott.
Next, we have Sue DeGruy. Sue, please go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, I brought this up before because, you know, we're in COVID and it's supposed to be all emergency things, and it's really becoming alarming to me how many times HPD comes up and we voted, well, on the planning now as also a consideration of deforestation in one area. So it's just, it's just really very concerning a feeling that it's very difficult for residents to stay on top of everything. And I've been going through the general plan, the operative general plan as carefully as I can. I want to go through it like four or five times. Well, I agree with everything everybody else said so far. It was very well said. And I really appreciate the request by Planning Commissioner Hauser to hear more, to get to the historical perspective of HPD. And from the general plan, I want to take a quote from page 122. Because of their importance to the character of the city, the visual perception of ridge lines should be retained. And it goes on to implementations, and anyway, the general plan is extremely important. HPD is extremely important, and how the general plan was created by robust involvement of the public. And anything along these lines, piecemeal planning is not good. COVID planning is just really, it's really burdensome to the conscience. I'm sorry. It's really bothersome. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. DeGruy.
Next, we have Jim Cramer. Please go ahead.
Unmute. Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes, please go ahead.
Excuse me. I'm James Cramer residing in Sharp Park. I've been away, and I had some catching up to do. I read in the minutes of the July 6th meeting that Commissioner Hauser's communication suggested that our Hillside Protection District, or HPD, deserves special attention. She requested a platform where explanations could benefit city officials and the public. I really agree with that. In response, Director Murdoch pointed out that the HPD is publicly available to read, but he did agree that, quote, "getting the facts out would be a good thing." In the July 19th meeting, he reported that a fact sheet was being prepared, quote, "to dispel any confusion." For me, this is not an issue of getting the facts out. And dispelling any confusion presumes that there is only one interpretation. Sometimes when I read explanations of complicated subjects, I have lots of questions. Perhaps the issue is not that the public doesn't understand it. Months ago, I did a study of the ordinance, as some of the other speakers tonight said. It is refreshingly brief. Most of it is explicit, albeit with terms that need clarification. My concern is that some parts that are explicit seem to be considered flexible or at least readily subject to variances by the city. I thought variances were supposed to be rare, justifiable only under extraordinary circumstances. What I am afraid of is the piece by piece dismantling of the HPD by these variances. Does that seem extreme? Variances become precedent. Perhaps our concern should not be that public discussion of HPD might, quote, "muddle the issue for specific projects." In my opinion, a fact sheet cannot replace an inclusive discussion. It is essential that valid alternative interpretations be heard and considered. I understand why the Planning Department may feel this is undesirable, but it would be good for the public, and it would lead to, and it could lead to improvement of the ordinance. My concerns, and I expect I'm not alone. In fact, hearing some other speakers, I'm clear. It's clear the case. My concerns are not that the ordinance is not understandable. It is with the city's interpretation. I really favor an open discussion, ideally a public working session, where the city's interpretations are not just explained, but openly discussed with input from all stakeholders. We may need help with the letter of, we may need expert help with the letter of the law, but we are qualified to speak on the intent. Is there no chance that the alternative views have merit? Our HPD is vital to the quality of life and indeed to the finances of the city in Pacifica. I suggest that no variances of our HPD be approved by the city until concerns over the weakening of this ordinance can be resolved. Finally, it's hard enough to get to the truth when we're all working together, respecting the input of those who have different points of view. If we don't work in a context of mutual respect and trust, all working in good faith trying to get it right, it won't work as well, and the outcome will not be good. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next is Nick Lessin. Please go ahead.
Yeah, good evening, Commissioners. Thank you, everybody, for your time. Thank you, as always, for your service to the community as well. Similar topic is a number of other people speaking this evening. Now, you do have a project on your agenda that has HPD applied to it. To be clear, I'm not speaking out against that particular house and project. You know, I leave that in your capable hands of determining if that's a correct project. Our concern comes in the treatment of HPD. You know, language is imperfect. Policies and rules are imperfect. No one in the history of writing an ordinance and rules has ever written a airtight, perfect ordinance. You know, this is where lawyers make their living, correct? What's not in question is that HPD has been in effect in our community for decades and has been implied in a certain manner and interpreted in a certain manner. And it is incorrect for that policy to now begin to be reinterpreted in a different manner without a proper civic process around that discussion. And I think that's what we're really asking for, or a number of people are coming to ask for. You know, the other part of this is that if we start granting variances, how can you assure the public that a granting of variance on a HPD project doesn't set a precedent to further undermine HPD and other projects that are in the works and coming head in future times? So, you know, that's really the heart of the concern. We would like to see a, you know, proper vetting, you know, perhaps the policy needs updating, and, you know, some discussion and change around it, that's fine. But that should happen in a community process, in a civic process, and not a unilateral process. So, you know, we're asking for further consideration. You know, we appreciate that some of the Commissioners have asked for that. And we're hoping to see that before further movement happens on HPD that potentially sets precedent that weakens this policy that's so important to the community for so long. So again, thank you for your time. Best to risk your meaning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Christine Bowles. Please go ahead.
Good evening, Commissioners. I just want to echo the comments made by so many people this evening. And, you know, I've just heard that recently that several of you Commissioners were not really aware of the HPD ordinance until recently. I think the article I published in the paper has kind of awakened that a bit in the community as well as on the commission. And I appreciate Commissioners Hauser and Nebelen, you know, asking for a presentation so that you can better understand the nuances of the ordinance. It really seems premature tonight to ask you to opine on these variance requests before you can make the required findings. As you know, from my previous correspondence, I disagree with the Planning Department's analysis of several recently approved projects that did not, in my opinion, include a proper review of HPD and the staff reports. One of those is the Harmony 1 Lot 3, which exceeded the HPD coverage by a great amount. I believe it was about a third for issues of grading. And there were a lot of discrepancies in the drawings that were not cut by the Planning Department either with more paving shown than was included in the sheet with the calculations. So I think, I think we need to do a better job in understanding our ordinance and also in reviewing plans. Trust but verify is a word, is a phrase I've come to embrace. Developers are always asking for more and pushing for more, and yet we have an ordinance that we can measure. And the drawings need to be checked thoroughly. All these things can be done on a computer these days. You don't need printed out drawings. And, you know, as we point this out in project after project, I would hope that this is a lesson that's being learned and that in the future, we can, we can, again, rely on and trust the Planning Department to produce a proper staff report for you and also for the public. As I mentioned, you know, besides Harmony 1, the 801 Fassler, and recently I've just been looking at Harmony 1 Lot D that had issues of HPD coverage that were not discussed in the staff report. The staff report said it complied, but it did not. It was asking for nuanced exceptions, and because those were not brought to you, you did not even know that they should be discussed and reviewed by your commission. So I ask you to listen to the public, take a closer look yourselves, and improve the process again, so we can retain the public trust. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowles. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Summer Lee. Please go ahead.
Hi, good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for your service always. My name is Summer Lee. I'm a resident of Pacifica for over 20 years, and I'm not against this particular development of the single residence that's going to be discussed later tonight. But like the others who are speaking up, I'm concerned about how the city has been disregarding the importance of the Hillside Preservation District ordinance. I moved to Pacifica because of the vision of a city who understood that open hillsides are a valuable resource. Also, most jurisdictions do not allow the disturbance of soil on slopes greater than 35% for obvious reasons. As others have mentioned, there seems to be a need of a better understanding of the HPD ordinance, both its history but also the spirit of it, which was to keep Pacifica beautiful and safe. So how could variances be granted when the underlying ordinance seems to be misunderstood, unevenly implied, and in some cases overlooked? In the same vein, we do not want to be the city that during this particular moment of devastating wildfires and drought, we just let standards go, particularly fire standards. I will not repeat the many fine points already made about the importance of HPD and the need for public input and government transparency. But I do want to add my voice that a public, a proper public process is needed to consider and understand the application of the HPD ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Next speaker, please.
There are no more hands raised, Chair.
Thank you. But we'll go ahead then and close oral communications. And I'll confirm, we have no consent items.
Correct.
Thank you. That then will take us to our new public hearing for this evening. It's file number 2018057. This is General Plan Amendment GPA 100-21, rezoning RZ 20118, Development Plan DP 7918, Specific Plan SP 16918, Variance PV 52618, and Parking Exception PE 19121, filed by Matthew and Margaret Murphy for a general plant land use designation changed to very low density residential, rezoning to the PD and development of HPD Hillside Preservation Districts. Authorization for a single-family residential use and construction of a 2,406 square foot single-family residence with a two-car garage, excuse me, on a 24,149 square foot undeveloped parcel at the eastern terminus of Talbot Avenue in Pacifica. The variance is required to exceed the allowable coverage within the HPD zoning district and the variance in parking exception are required to deviate from the guest parking requirements for the HPD zoning district. Recommended sequel action from staff to us is a class three categorical exemption. The sequel guidelines have this exemption at section 1203. And recommended action is the adoption of a doctor resolution to approve the development permits as conditioned and recommends City Council approval of general plan amendments, rezoning and development plan. So I'll go ahead and ask for a staff report on this.
Good evening, Commissioners, staff, and members of community in attendance. I am going to present the project, and if you just give me a minute, I'll share screen with the slides. So this project is a single-family residence on Talbot Avenue, address to be determined. The project site is 24,149 square foot undeveloped lot at the eastern terminus of Talbot Avenue, about 470 feet of length of the street immediately west to the project site as a private street with access rights via easements to the project site, and the city previously located this segment of Talbot Avenue. The general plan designation on the site is low-density residential. The zoning is single-family residential with B size overlay and Hillside Preservation District. The average slopes on the side are approximately 55%. There is undeveloped plan immediately to the northeast and west of the site, and there are single-family residences, one to two-story, to the south of the project site and to the southwest on the south side of Talbot Avenue and on Canyon Drive on lower ground to the northwest. Milagra Ridge Trail is to the northeast on, in the Golden Gate National Recreation Area property. On the site, there is a 50-foot wide Pacific Gas and Pacific Gas and Electric Company easement and an access easement for the driveway for the residents to the south in the southern portion of the site. Additionally, there are underground gas water lines, power poles with overhead electric lines. The project itself is a two-story, 2,406 square foot residence with an attached 425 square foot two-car garage. The project or the building is located at a cross slope along the northwestern border of the PG&E easement. The access to the development would be provided from Talbot Avenue. We are a 12-foot wide driveway. There is uncovered parking along with the two-car garage for two cars adjacent to the driveway. The project includes 1,0968 square foot of new planted area, and 17,576 square foot will remain in existing national vegetated state. So the disturbed area on the site is going to be 6,573 square foot, which corresponds to the coverage on the property. Just to give you some idea of what the project look like, it looks like, it is set into the slopes or the hillside on the northeast and the northwest side of the, the property. The building would be 35 feet tall, which is the maximum allowed for the standards. From the finished grade of the building, so the, the height is between the lowest point in the area covered by the building to the topmost portion of the roof. The rear elevation or the northwest elevation and the northeast elevation would be visible from Milagro Ridge and the building employs a variety of materials and the treatments of the facades to lend some visual interest to have it appear presentable from those vantage points. The applicant is requesting five entitlements, rezoning, development plan, specific plan, variance, parking exception and general plan amendment. The rezoning is required because the development of in HPD requires zoning reclassification to PD or Plan Development District. This rezoning would not change the HPD zoning classification. The final action on rezoning is by city council under state law and the Pacifica Municipal Court. Development plan adoption is required in PD district to identify permitted uses. And again, the final action is by city council under the PMC. Within the plan development, district development also requires a specific plan showing proper orientation, desirable design character and compatible land uses. The project applicant is also requesting variances or variance for the HPD coverage allowance and for the parking requirement under the HPZ zoning district. Also, the parking exception for exception from the parking requirements for the HPD zoning district. The general plan amendment is an additional entitlement which is not provided in the PMC, but it is provided in state law. The land use designation change would take place to very low density residential from low density residential. In the low density residential designation, three to nine units per acre are allowable, which equals to an average lot area of 4,0840 square feet to 14,520 square feet per unit. The project is not consistent with the allowable density for LDR. So there is just one unit on the property or proposed on the property and the very low density residential designation is what would be applicable. So a general plan amendment is required for that reason. In the very low density residential, allowable density is point two to two units per acre, which corresponds to an average lot area of half acre to five acres per unit, per unit. The entitlements and the findings discussion is included and described in the agenda packet from page 28 to 49. I would just wanted to present to you some major takeaways for staff recommendation for approval of the variances. As I said, the variances are for the HPD coverage and for the guest parking. And in this case, there are special topographic circumstances. So it is a very steep topography on the site, particularly towards the north and the northeast of the property. If we were to calculate out per the HPD coverage formula at a maximum average slope of 37.42%, the coverage would be zero. And the site contains slopes of 55% average slopes, that is. And because of which, the HPD coverage is 0% for the site. And for that reason, strict application of the HPD coverage standard would deprive the owner of reasonable use of the property, which is not consistent with the intent of the land coverage controls within the district. Also, there are similar improvements on neighboring properties under the same zoning designation. There is a residence across the street which is developed under the same PD HPD classification. And there are residences, single family residences along Talbot also, where those improvements exist. As, as such, the project, because it is consistent with all applicable standards, except for the HPD coverage and the guest parking standard. And it is consistent with the design guidelines. Also, it is capable of supporting the proposed improvements for a geotechnical investigation which was conducted for the project. It is not materially detrimental to public health, healthcare, safety or injuries to property or improvements in the vicinity. There have been some nine previous variance applications for the, from the HPD coverage standards and two from HPD parking standards. The HPD coverage standard variances were requested between 1977 and 2008. And the parking variance requests were between 2006 and 2014. So the variance requests are not very frequent because there have been not that many development applications in this designation. And out of the applications for variances in these two areas that came in, it appears that five were approved. As far as the guest parking is concerned, the requirement is two covered parking, which is and two uncovered parking and one guest parking. In that regard, the HPD guest parking requirements are intended to address projects in increments of 10 units in size. And the strict application of that, considering this is just one single family residence and the fact that these topographies too steep would become burdensome. Also, if staff were to require an additional guest parking, that would increase the coverage of, or the HPD coverage for the development, which is not necessarily desirable because the aim has been to contain that, considering that the allowable coverage is zero. The parking is also consistent with a single family residence parking requirements in other zoning districts. Like the R1 zoning district, which is similar in nature and function to, to this site. And the parking requirement, there is two covered parking and one guest parking if there is no off street parking available. So given all that and the fact that it is possible that even though it will not be technically up to the standard, a guest parking when need be may be provided on the driveway to the project. Given all that, the variance for guest parking is not going to be materially detrimental to the public welfare or again injurious to property or improvements in the area. Parking exception, some of the reasons I cited in the variance discussion. So the fact that this is consistent with parking requirements in other single family residences and one guest parking could possibly be accommodated on the driveway. It seems that the project is nearly in compliance with the requirements as reasonably as possible as far as parking is concerned. The project is categorically exempt from California Environmentally, Environmental Quality Act under class three, which exempts one single family residence or a second dwelling unit in a residential zone and an urbanized area up to three single family residences could be constructed or converted. None of the exceptions to the application of exemption apply. Just to also put in the record that staff had received two public comments after the agenda was posted, which are on the planning website. Based on this discussion and the discussion in the staff report, staff recommendation is that the planning commission find the project exempt from CEQA. Recommend that the city council approve general plan amendment GPA 100 dash 21. Rezoning RZ dash 20118 and Development Plan DP dash 79 dash 18. And approve specific plan SP dash 169 dash 18. Variance PV dash two 526 dash 18 and parking exception PE dash 191 dash 121 as the project is conditioned. That concludes staff report. If there are any questions, I would be happy to take them now.
Well, thank you, Ms. Agarwal, for that comprehensive report. I'll go ahead then and ask if there are any questions from commissioners for Ms. Agarwal or other members of staff before we turn to public comment or actually first, Commissioner Godwin. Commissioner Godwin, did you have a question or comment from Ms. Agarwal?
Yes. My, my first question is, was the fire risk considered on this site? And if so, did North County Fire approve it?
The North County Fire viewed the plants and they conditioned the project. And those conditions are included in the conditions of approval for the project. There are not any trees or large vegetation within the development area. And they did look at the fire hose layout plan and approved that condition as conditioned.
Thank you, Ms. Agarwal and Commissioner Godwin, Deputy Director Murdock here. Just to expand upon that, I did spend time with the North County Fire Authority, not only discussing with them their architectural site plan review, but also broader considerations about this potentially being in a wildland urban interface and other considerations about the fire service access features and the slope of the site and so forth. There was nothing out of the ordinary for the fire department, in their opinion, with respect to reviewing this particular project that elicited concerns that required special interventions through further conditions of approval or modifications to the project.
Thank you. My second basic question is about utilities. Is the electric power going to be underground or is it from a power pole or, or what sort of connections are going to be provided?
Engineering requires undergrounding of electric lines from the pole to the development. So that is the area where it will be undergrounded.
Okay. And finally, I noticed in, in the report, there was a request for a darker colored roof to make the, the roof a little less visible from the Milagro Ridge Trail. I guess with climate change and all that good stuff, the general recommendation is light colored roofs and in order to increase the reflectivity of the house and, and minimize any heating demand. Have you thought about that as well?
We would examine the light reflectivity value of the roof when it does come in prior to building permit issuance of the plans. And that was not something that we had thought of in the review of, of the plans of the planning entitlement stage, but it would be something that we should consider. And we would consider in evaluating what the colors would be at the, finally. So essentially it is more a question of reflectivity value. So there would be choices of colors and to find a balance between that it gets subdued within the background and that there are other concerns that might have to be addressed, get addressed.
Thank you. That was the last of my questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Godwin. Commissioner Howser.
Thank you, Chair. And I sent a lot of questions to planning and I really appreciate staff's report because they, they addressed all of my questions in the report. So thank you. I did have two additional ones that came up and I don't know if someone from Public Works this year or someone who may have reviewed the title report, but I wanted to understand how long the PG&E and the utility easement, the water utility easement had been recorded on the property.
So there are two easements. One runs along the western property boundary, which is a PG&E easement. And then there is one which is a 50 foot wide easement which runs along the southern border. I am not entirely certain on what the length of that would be, but it's something that engineering staff has evaluated.
So maybe I'll reserve the, I see Mr. Chavaria is on the phone and I'm sure he's done a thorough title review. So maybe I'll, I'll reserve my question, but when, when that isn't appropriate time, I think my, my questions are how long have the easements been in place? And then how long has the property owner been pursuing this application? If I could get a sense of kind of the timeline of if there have been other applications or when, how long this has been going on, I think it would be helpful.
This application was, was submitted in late 2018. And since then, there have been some resumitals and they were incompleteness items that the applicant had to respond to, which had to with the, the design of the project as well as how the development would be located on the site. And also we had questions about whether the development would be conducted in a manner that wouldn't disrupt any of the utility lines on site. So information with regard to that was also provided. But the application has been in process since late 2018.
Okay. Commissioner Howser, if I'm understanding maybe what's behind your question with respect to the PG&E easement. This lot was created in the early 1960s, if I'm recalling correctly, 1962 or 1963. And so that might be a relevant date for the types of questions you're asking. And perhaps Mr. Chavaria can elaborate on when the various easements were, were recorded on the property.
That's really helpful.
Thank you. And when Mr. Chavaria has your opportunity to present, hopefully you'll touch on those things. Commissioner Howser, any other questions or comments? Thank you. Great. Well, I, you know, I don't see more hands for the moment. So what I think I'm going to do then is go ahead and move to the portion of the, of the matter where we hear from the applicants and I'm imagining Mr. Chavaria will be presenting and perhaps the, you know, I'll leave it to him to, to clarify that, that our, our protocols are that we afford the applicant 10 minutes to present the item and we also allow the applicant to reserve some portion of that time if the applicant chooses to, to address any matters that might come up by way of public comment. So with that said, Mr. Chavaria, will you be taking it from here?
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for the time. We're going to start a little different if you don't mind today. The property owner wants to make an opening statement and after he finishes five minutes or so, then I can address all the technical aspects.
That sounds good. Well, we hope, we'll hear from the Murphys to start then. Why don't you go ahead?
Okay, thank you. My name is Brendan Murphy. This is Hartan, my wife. This is my son, our son Matthew and our daughter Leanne. We are the prospective residents of this project, we hope. And we would love to move to Pacifica. And we would love to move to Pacifica. We find it a wonderful place. I've been coming here for walks for the last thirty years. My dad has lived here for the last fifteen years and we'd love, I'd love an opportunity for my kids to live on the same street as their granddad. That's something I never got to do and it would be, I would really, it would be a dream for me to have my kids do that. I currently commute long distances and moving here would really help me out that way and it would help the collective heir. So this has been a long process. Like it's been said, this has been three years that this project has been going on. And I'm not sure what's normal or not, but you know, it took us two years just to prove the legality of the lot. And you know, after those two years, we did receive our certificate of compliance. And we were glad to do that, but we've also had an additional year of, you know, crossing every T and dotting every I. And we felt like the planning department has been really thorough and we've met all of, we've tried to meet all their demands and they've worked with us. They've been good to work with, but it is becoming exhausting after these three years. But, and you know, has cost quite a lot as well. You know, with that said, we understand I really value nature, the, the surroundings, the environment, and certainly we don't want to build some monstrosity that's going to be an eyesore for everyone in that regard. You know, we feel like we've, we're presenting a really modest house. This isn't a mansion. This is just a family house and you know, for my family to live in. And you know, it's a challenging lot. There, there's a fifty-foot easement running through the middle of the, what would be an obvious place to build a lot, to build the house. And that fifty-foot easement had us pushed off to the side, going down the hill. Also created a longer driveway, this easement. And so where I understand we're running into trouble with hillside preservation requirements. But with that said, we're keeping our house very small and very narrow to, well, you know, relatively, we're keeping it, it's a modest size. It's not a mansion, like I said, and we're keeping it narrow to, you know, to have a less impact on the hillside and, and the environment. We love this town. We'd love to move here. You know, I never got to even meet my granddad and it would mean a lot to me to, for my kids to grow up here up the street from their granddad and we're hoping to become a part of the community. And we're hoping we're allowed to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Mr. Ms. Murphy and Murphy Kids, I guess we'll go ahead then and hear from Mr. Chavaria for the balance of the time.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Nebelen. I'm going to start by clarifying the, the recording data of the easement. A PG&E easement was recorded in nineteen fifty-four. And it, it's a really complicated scenario because there is a fifty-foot strip at the top of the property, but then there is a floating section of the easement that allows PG&E to put the lines basically where they wanted. And that's what they did. So the gas line has kind of a quirky way to go down the hill. It doesn't follow a specific pattern because of that condition of the easement. The lot, it was also very complicated because when it was created, there were not the specific documents that were filed. Everything was done with paper. So for staff to accept a lot as complete, we have to prepare a certificate of compliance. We went and did a title search in a title history dating back to the nineteen twenties. And it was demonstrated that the lot was correctly created. A certificate of compliance was issued in that depicts the location of all the easements. So basically the lot does correctly dates from the nineteen sixties and the easements, they were already recorded before the lot itself was split. In regards to the design of the home, just as the owner mentioned, the majority of the easement is already been disturbed as gas lines, electric lines and water lines are already installed there. The driveway is located on top of that easement and the building itself, the footprint is less than two thousand square feet. And that is the new portion of the lot that is being disturbed. The design of the home, narrow and long, was done on purpose to minimize the disturbance to the hillside. We are missing the opportunity to build on the most buildable area of the lot because of the easement. So what we did is minimize grading, try to locate the driveway in such a manner that it didn't interfere with the gas line and the electric line and all the other utilities in place. So the location of the home, I think is optimal for the site. And I know that staff did a really thorough job and it appears that we need five different permits and all that, but in reality, what we're asking for is just the exception of the HPD. All the other elements are sort of technicalities. We are downgrading the density from low density to very low density, just because the numbers don't match. But that is something that i- is, is just a technicality, not something that we as the designers or the owners require. And as the staff mentioned, I think the, the building, it provides enough parking, two garages, two parking spaces and a long driveway should be sufficient to cover the practical needs of the home. So in summary, I feel that the building is well-located. And the issues with the fire protection, the fire department has evaluated the plans. The hundred and fifty feet distance of the, that any point of the building should have from the point where the fire truck is located. And there are exceptions on the building code that allows a little more than a hundred and fifty feet to the discretion of the fire marshal, particularly section five or three point one grants exceptions when we have just a single-family home to have that length of hose a little longer than a hundred and fifty feet. Any questions that you may have, I'd be more than happy to answer. I don't want to go over with more information as I think staff did a thorough job and explained the project very clearly. But again, I'm happy to answer or clarify any issues that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Chavaria. Mr. Murdock, I just want to inquire, is there any time off of the ten minutes that remains?
I believe there was approximately a minute and a half remaining.
Well, we'll go ahead and allow Mr. Chavaria to reserve that should Mr. Chavaria want to say anything after we work our way through the, the comments that we might have on this project. So I think then that will take us to the portion of the, of the proceedings where we hear from any public comments of the perspective of this specific project. So I'll go ahead and Mr. Murdock can ask you to help us navigate through that.
Thank you, Chair. At this moment, I'm not seeing any hands raised. And as I say that, hands are being raised. So let me get set up for public comment.
All right.
All right. There are two hands raised right now. We will start with Cliff Lawrence. Please go ahead.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, I'm trying to unmute. Sorry.
Please go ahead.
I had a whole different idea of what I was going to say tonight, but having heard the presentation and some of the things you really pointed me in a different direction. First, I'd like to speak to the issue or, or the mention of the existing housing on Talbot Road as a false equivalency because the geography is entirely different. And anybody that looks at the topographical map sees that immediately. This would be the first house on the really steep, slotted slope side. The other does have a more appropriate place. The even number side of the street is more appropriate place to build. So that was my, my first point. Second, okay, I'm trying to read my sloppy notes here. HPD, we, we heard a little recitation about the history of other HPD exceptions that have been brought before. And this is my point. Every one of these becomes a part of the recital and every time you, you make an exception, you change the dynamics of the future. So you must take each one of these seriously because you're starting with one today, you know, next is fifty, next is a hundred and you know they're coming. So I'm very concerned about that and, and I hope you understand that HPD has made what Pacifica is today and we enjoy that. And what are we going to pass on to those who come after us? Fire safety, there's some real issues with fire safety here, folks. This, this hill is at the end of a, like a hollow and it, then it rises up. So any fire that starts in the bottom, that just races up the hill to this, to this building. And I guess there's a eucalyptus tree, some not that far from the building. I won't get into the issue of fire hose length, but these people, I'm sure the family, I know they want to move over there, but they had to understand the difficulties of using this particular site for building. And I presume they knew about HPD and all those things, but they still decide that this is the direction they want to go and put their hearts into it. That said, there is a real risk here. Now, our governance is to protect the city and the individual and our governance is that we're trying to protect your family against that fire and you want an exception to that. I think you should indemnify the city. I'm sorry. I, I don't mean to cold about that, but you're asking us to do something that we don't think is safe. With that, I see the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Next speaker, please.
Next is Mike Bernaza. Please go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on the variance requests. Given that the neighbors have been able to enjoy those privileges as well, you know, section nine dash four dot three four oh four, you know, creates that, that variance capability. And also I don't see it in point two, to endanger the welfare. The previous speaker perhaps may see that differently if they were to, you know, potentially start a fire or something of that nature, but it is already a neighborhood. So hopefully get to welcome the Murphy family into the community. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bernaz. And next speaker, please.
Because when it's time to go.
Next speaker is Christine Bowles. Please go ahead.
Good evening again, Commissioners and staff. My name is Christine Bowles. I'm a licensed architect and a resident of the Manor District. I sent you all a letter this afternoon detailing my concerns with this project in relation to fire safety, geological risks, the hillside preservation ordinance and the possible need for additional variances that are not currently noted in the staff report. Also the lack of adequate analysis for general plan conformance, in particular in regards to hillsize and the possibility of a public trail that is in the land, the coastal, local coastal plan. I hope you have a chance to read my letters. I don't have time to go over all these issues here now. I do especially want to make sure the issues of public safety are addressed tonight. I heard staff say that the fire department added conditions of approval, but I do not see these in the staff report that was published to the public. Can I ask for a page number if it is in the published report and if it was added later? Can I ask for those conditions to be read aloud tonight? I, I do want to understand if the fire department has allowed for extra hose lengths because the, as I said, the drawings are inaccurate. There, as I've noted in my letter, there are also implications of planting trees so close to the home and on a slope of approximately a hundred percent. I remind you that the page one oh two of the general plan safety element that also happened to be ignored on the Vista Mar project by the same applicant says that trees appear to be more harmful to overall stability of slopes over fifty percent and should be avoided. Again, the area where these trees are being planted is closer to a hundred percent or one-to-one slope. In terms of the HPD variances, I'm really appalled that there's no discussion in the planning staff report as to precedence. So how many variances have been granted over the years since the ordinance was enacted? And what, what were the conditions of those? What were any mediation measures required as part of those? Were they as excessive as, as this is for this project where it says that nothing can be built? As I indicated, the project to, for this, for a project of this size to be legally built on this lot, meeting the general, the HPD regulations, it would have to have a slope closer to twenty percent. And we're talking about a fifty-five percent average and closer to a hundred percent at the bottom where of, where the house is sitting. The flatter part of the site is unbuildable, as you know, as part of the easement. And I'm also just concerned about this general plan that is still so old, the safety element that is still so old and that we continue to review projects without proper analysis. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowles. Next speaker, please.
There are no more hands raised, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. Again, the applicant has a minute, a minute and a half reserved if the applicant cares to address any matters that were raised in public comment.
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Chavaria.
Yes, I just want to briefly speak to the, to the issue of the HPD, the location of the home. It is a difficult site, granted. The most buildable area is taken by the easement, but it's a property that it was a zone already for residential. And we understand and we completely concur that there are discrepancies in some of the documents such as general plan and zoning plans. But this building, I mean, this site is designated for residential and we are doing the best possible way that, that we can to place a building correctly, to minimize the disturbance, to create a safe environment. Geotechnical report was prepared and it doesn't show really any instability in the area. The building will be set on three peers to the current standards. Drawings are going to be peer reviewed and properly engineered. The fire department has reviewed the plans and of course, the owners and we as the designers will not want to build something that is unsafe. Every precaution is to be taken to comply as close as possible to all the regulations. And, and let's not forget that the buildings are required to be a sprinkled as well. So the possibilities for a serious catastrophe generated by the building itself is very unlikely.
Thank you, Mr. Chavaria.
Thank you.
So we'll go ahead then and close the, this portion of our, of the hearing on this matter. So we'll bring it back to the commission from the applicant in the public and we'll move then to deliberations and, and sort of discussions. So Commissioner Hauser, I see you have your hand down.
I do. And you know, this is, this has been a kind of interesting one. You know, HPD is very clear and the calculation is very clear. And you know, right now this is designed as if it's got a twenty percent average slope. I think if there was a flat spot on this parcel and then the remainder of it was fifty-five percent. you know, I could kind of wrap my head around potentially placing a building here, but it the the site is off the edge of a cliff. And if you go to the cul-de-sac and you get out, I mean, you're like, you're looking down. So I I just, I just don't see it, to be totally honest. I really just don't see it. HPD has been around for 50 years. The easements have been on the site for 70 years. And I don't think the land use has changed. So while I really, I appreciate that it's just a single family home. And but when you buy a piece of property, you know, you're given disclosures and to some extent, there's kind of an eyes wide open that that needs to happen. And I just I I personally don't think that I I just don't see it. So that's where I'm coming from.
Thank you, Commissioner Hauser. You know, I had a question actually for Mr. Rudin. One of the things that has come up in the staff report and one of the you know, sort of matters that sort of discuss in the context of the of the variance, again, in the staff report is a concern about avoiding confiscation, I guess, that maybe the term is being used in the staff report. It always speaks to regulations that might result in inability to make any sort of, you know, use of a property whatsoever. And I was hoping you could speak a little bit more to that because that's that's something that's on my mind as I'm thinking about all this.
Yeah, the city's HPD ordinance basically sets forth a coverage formula and states that it should be interpreted to in a manner that's not going to be confiscatory. And while the city code doesn't have any specific definition about what that really means, you know, typically, when the voters are enacting that, you know, they're assumed to enact it in light of the background of relevant law. And one of the issues, you know, and likely one of the reasons why that language is in there is the concept of regulatory takings. And that is basically the concept that, you know, land use regulations cannot deny a property owner all economic, you know, beneficial use of their property without some form of compensation by the government. And so, you know, with respect to the land use coverage standards, they do basically decrease coverage over, you know, as a set formula down to zero. Now, with respect to having a zero coverage standard, that does substantially make it difficult for, you know, a landowner to make economically beneficial use of their property. Basically, a zero coverage standard says you can't build anything on top of it. And, you know, that is one of the reasons why there is, you know, the potential for an applicant to apply for a variance. Again, when the voters enacted this particular ordinance, the concept of variance and land use law was well known. It had been around for at least a decade at that time. And it, the ordinance didn't modify or eliminate the city's ability to grant a variance on the basis of you know, depriving an owner based on, you know, the based on the requirements of variance law, basically denying the owner the same sort of use that they'd be entitled to. You know, that is permitted under the zoning classification that's available to other users. So with respect to the coverage formula, you know, the idea of all economic benefit doesn't mean that the applicant's entitled to specifically the amount of coverage that they would like. They're likely entitled. Well, not entitled, but, you know, in order to avoid that potential risk of a regulatory takings, you know, there has to be some economically beneficial use available to that landowner.
Thank you, Mr. Rudin. I just want to refresh my recollection. Sorry, I should know this off the top of my head. I don't. When when was the Hillside Preservation District ordinance adopted?
And it looks like, based on the notes in the city code, that would have been adopted around 1972, which in this case would mean that it would have been adopted. Christian, when you guys were looking into this certificate of compliance issue, you guys determined that this lot was created before that ordinance?
Correct.
Yeah. So so thank you. So the the lot was actually in existence, you know, at the time that the ordinance was adopted, I think that we ought to, you know, look at this in the context of certain timing of things here. I I myself am very hesitant to to deny a, you know, a project that looks like it's very kind of well thought out. It's been through quite a process. I think that the the parcel is in fact zoned. General plan actually designation contemplates residential, zoning contemplates residential use. You know, I actually believe this is a situation where a variance would be appropriate, and I recognize that there are concerns about all that, that you know, I'm, you know, with respect and coming out, coming down to a different place from my colleague.
Chair Nebelen, Deputy Director Christian Murdock. Several members of the public also wanted for more information, as I heard it, related to previous variances from HPD standards. And so if it would be acceptable to you, I'd like to just say a few brief remarks on that point.
Sure. Why don't you go ahead, Ryan?
Thank you, Chair. So at the outset, I just want to say that Mr. Radeen can certainly opine on the issue of precedent in relation to adjudicative land use decisions such as this and such as the variance that's in question. But generally speaking, it's my understanding that these are not precedential from a legal standpoint. However, they are instructive, in my opinion, as to how the city approached similar questions under different or in some cases, similar circumstances and what the outcome was. And so with that in mind, staff was able to identify in total, I believe, approximately 11 previous variance applications from standards under the HPD zoning standards. And of those appears that 10 of them were from the HPD coverage standard. Two of them were from HPD parking standards. It is difficult to research that precise issue in some of our older planning records. These variances span from 1977 through 2014. And the the type of reports and the level of detail in those reports varies. With that said, I was able to piece together information about a handful of those previous variance applications. And according to our logbook, it looks like seven of those were approved. And of those seven, I was able to gather information on four of them. One, two, three of those four applications that were approved, the sites were entitled to 0% coverage under the HPD coverage regulations. They were approved for coverage in those instances. Two of them were undeveloped sites with 0% allowable coverage and ended up getting, in one case, 14.4% coverage and in another 11.9% coverage. Another was an unusual situation where they needed to do an extensive run of remedial grading to address geotechnical concerns. And it was a much larger project of several dozen condominium units, so maybe not directly relevant for this type of project. But the others were single family residential projects. And one of them in particular was on the site immediately adjacent and abutting this project, which is 722 Talbot. That was, I believe, approved in the mid 2000s. That site had 0% allowable coverage with an average slope on that site of 43.3%. That project was approved by the planning commission for 11.9% coverage or approximately 7,921 square feet of coverage. And so this particular request for a variance for the subject project is not out of line with those previous requests. It's in that same range of coverage amount in terms of percentage of site and square footage. And it's actually less proposed coverage than the site that's immediately next door. And so hopefully that puts in context the fact that variances from the HPD coverage standard in particular are not unprecedented, but they come up infrequently and they're not something that we encourage applicants to pursue. And indeed, there are very few that we have record of being considered and approved by the city. And so they are a tool, as Mr. Radeen explained, to provide a safety valve, if you will, to avoid regulatory takings and to allow economic use of property where this particular zoning standard, the HPD coverage formula would yield no economic use by virtue of disallowing any coverage on a site. So thank you for the opportunity to share that information with the commission in the public.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock, for that rundown. I think I'm going to move then to Commissioner Rat Damarat, who has to stand up.
Yeah, one, one quick observation and then a question. I concur with Ms. Hauser's assessment that this is very steep. I was there today. And you don't want to slip and fall in that area. However, if you compare it to other places where a lot of construction has been allowed in Pacifica, specifically Pedro Point, there are areas there that pretty much had no land whatsoever, and homes were completely built out over very, very steep steep terrain. So I think from an engineering side, there's not going to be an issue of of constructing the home that that has been proposed. Looking at some of the mapping of the area, there seems to be, and maybe this is a question for staff, there seems to be a an unofficial trail that extends from the back of the property up towards Sharp Park Road. Is that an an issue for anyone? Is that something that the public has been used to using? And will it become an issue for the property owner in the future? Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner Domaret. Indeed, you've located an informal trail that exists cutting across the property and going up up slope towards Sharp Park Road. It is it is a site that could be impacted by this project if the property owner was to prohibit all access to the property. You know, if it pleases the Chair, the property owner could speak to their thoughts on their intended use of that trail by the public moving forward. But it is identified as a trail opportunity, as I recall, and in some of the city's planning documents, but to this point, the city has not acquired that right for public access. And, you know, there's no planning policy in this case to oblige the property owner to provide that as a condition of development of the site.
And I would have some concerns about requiring the property owner to provide that sort of access as a condition of development to the site as well.
Thank you, Mr. Rudin. Appreciate that. But I will ask Mr. Chubb if he cares or or the Murphys whether they care to comment on that point since it's been raised.
Brendan, you want to speak about it?
Oh, yeah, we have no objection whatsoever as to, you know, provide leaving access to that trail. It's would have to also be discussed with the easement holders, PG&E. And I think it's the and the water department. But for us, hey, great, we're not in this to, you know, ruin people's experience with Pacifica. I love trails. I don't like trails being taken away. So yes, we're okay with that.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. Commissioner Berman.
Thank you. That's actually the perfect segue into my first set of questions. Regarding the PG&E easement, and this is likely a question for Mr. Chavaria. The easement's language, does it allude to specifically what PG&E requires there? Obviously, per typical PG&E easements, you can't build a structure on it. You can't block access to it. My take on what appeared to be kind of an unidentified trail was that that would be PG&E access to the power lines or the gas line. Mr. Chavaria, do you mind answering that question?
Yes, absolutely. The easement itself is exclusive PG&E easement. In fact, when the water company was trying to obtain an easement, there was a lot of discussions between the North Coast County Water District and PG&E to obtain an approval for a water line in place. The the easement is very old, 1954, and the language is very vague. Basically, PG&E has a jurisdiction to do whatever they want, wherever they want on that portion of the property. If if an access easement, a public access easement were to be proposed, I think there is two elements of concern. One, will the property owner carry liability if somebody gets hurt on the property? And the other one is whether PG&E will allow an official overlay on his easement for public access.
Thank you. That was one of my original concerns, just in review of the staff report. Appreciating that, of course, the build, the house structure is outside of the easement. I think the grading, as well as the curves associated with the driveway, and one of the flow-through planners are are all within the easement and could restrict access to some extent. If if we were to go into more detail, I I do take a concern with the flow-through planner that is partially at like in the easement, there's a corner of it. I think that would have to be relocated and effectively, it probably should be relocated further away from that gas line. And then with that, and I know this has been a concern voiced by the public with the realistic disturbance due to construction. Sure, there could be, you know, the edge of a building, the edge of a wall, the edge of a curb to a certain extent, but constructive ability wise, there needs to be some over excavation in order to build those facilities. So I, and again, this is probably something that would be beneficial to discuss at a town hall meeting where we really review each or we review the hillside preservation districts requirements and kind of the tolerances associated with it. I really do, I was hoping that we could have something like that before another one of these projects came before us. But getting back on topic, so I do have one more request or question. Are there any renderings of the vantage points specifically? I know in past projects, especially hillside projects, the applicant will will have some some sightline renderings available. I think it would be really advantageous for this location to have an idea of what the sightline is going to look like. You know, from higher elevation as well as lower elevation and adjacent roads. Are those available by any chance?
No, we did not prepare any rendering from vantage points, just the general rendering of the front.
Okay. And then I guess related to that as well, maybe because I'm not as artistically minded as some of my fellow commissioners, I was kind of having a hard time with understanding the compatibility of the modern style of the home with the rest of the houses on on this road. The majority of the houses seem kind of craftsmen sloped roof type homes. And then there's, of course, a Tuscan-style home directly adjacent, which, in my opinion, is out of place as well. But is there rendering a more illustrative rendering of the the home itself with like colors?
I don't have that available right now. We did prepare one. I'm not sure, Christian, if if we ever, I think we did submit that initially, but I don't have that readily available. I'm searching for it right now.
Okay. Well, well, that was the last of my major questions. Well, if my fellow commissioners don't mind, I'm going to ask one more. I don't see any. In regards to the additional parking variance, I'm wondering if it's if it would be possible to add just a parallel parking stall at the beginning of the driveway. So if you're kind of driving along the cul-de-sac and, you know, you're exiting the cul-de-sac and beginning to drive up the driveway, is there an opportunity for a parallel parking spot to widen, so widen the driveway from 12 feet to 20 feet? Just in that location, it's already disturbed. It it's going to be disturbed just due to grading. So in my opinion, it seems like that could be one variance we could avoid. And and perhaps a parallel parking stall can be placed on the I guess it's north side of the driveway. And that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Berman. I'm wondering maybe if I'm staff, have any thoughts on the feasibility of that suggestion?
Thank you, Chair. I think I have two components and maybe Ms. Agarwal has additional points. I think the first is looking at the requirement itself on its face and recognizing that the HPD imposes this requirement in units of 10 dwelling units. And so to consider this standard as one space for one unit, I think there's an argument to be made, and it's the argument that staff made that it's a burdensome requirement up to 10 times greater than what it ought to be on uh, up to ten times greater than what it ought to be on this particular project, given it's one dwelling unit. Uh, the other point is to consider, uh, it runs at cross purposes with the variance that's been requested for coverage and the fact that no more coverage than needed for the project has been requested according to the applicant. And so to, um, to require this may potentially cause additional coverage under HPD. The good news is in the location that you've indicated, um, if that's where a space were to end up, um, it's already indicated as, uh, disturbance, even though it's planting area, um, replanted after grading. Um, this would convert it from a landscaping coverage to a paving coverage. And so, um, as far as feasibility, we haven't evaluated that, but perhaps Mr. Chavaria could, could comment on that.
Uh, I mean, the, the adding the parking spaces is, is possible. Um, it will require some additional retaining walls in that section because the slope starts, uh, moving. Um, portion of the work is gonna need to be done on the public right-of-way. So an additional encroachment would be needed from, from the city. Uh, but, uh, is it possible? Yes, it is possible.
And Mr. Chavaria, could you remark as well? It looks like there's the four-inch gas line that may be in that area where retaining walls would be required. Um, unless I'm imagining a different place than.
No, the, the way that I was imagining now, if we have, uh, the tropical, uh, flow-through planter. So I was envisioning the parking spot, um, to the left side of the driveway, a sort of parallel to that tropical, uh, uh, flow-through planter. So we most likely will need a retaining wall along the line of the easement. Uh, that portion does not interfere with the location of the gas line, as long as we don't go any more than twelve feet inside the property. So it will have to be sort of halfway inside the property, halfway in the right-of-way.
I guess a follow-up question. Is the driveway already proposing a retaining wall there along that run? Because from.
It is. It proposes a small retaining wall to create a parking area. The driveway itself, itself is done upgrade. And, uh, the reason it's done, uh, completely upgrade is PG&E doesn't allow any retaining walls that will impact their access. So the one at the parking lot, uh, that it's okay because it's only twenty feet and it leaves thirty feet available for access to the rest of the, of the easement.
Um, I guess, am I allowed to share my screen just to make sure we're looking at the same location?
Yeah, go ahead. Is, is that enabled, Mr. Murdock?
Yes, it is, Chair.
Yeah, please go ahead.
Thank you. Can you see my screen?
Yes, we can. It says you've started sharing.
Okay, so the area I'm looking at is where my cursor is right here.
You know what? Actually, oh, there we go. Perfect. Okay.
If it were a parallel parking stall here, um, I mean, the grades, because the contours are perpendicular, my, in my opinion, the parking stall would be the same slope as the driveway, thus it's likely a retaining wall wouldn't be necessary. Um, is, uh, that's the area I'm looking at.
Yeah, that's, that's feasible.
Okay. And then I guess because it was mentioned, um, in my opinion, I don't believe retaining walls are allowed in the PG&E easement. Are there currently retaining walls or footings in the retain, in the PG&E easement proposed?
No, the only retaining wall is, uh, see where you have the cursor right now? There is a dimension of eighteen feet, um, in a darker line. So that is, uh, a, a gravity, no, coming up and down from exactly that way. So that one is, uh, is a gravity-type retaining wall with no footings. And, and it's, it's a very small one. It's only, um, eighteen inches to twenty-four inches tall.
Okay. Is, I guess in staff's opinion, is that allowed in a PG&E easement?
I'm not sure that we have an opinion to offer, given that it's not the city's easement, um, at this point in time.
And, and I, I may be able to clarify that typically, you know, the easement holder has the right to prohibit uses that would interfere with their reasonable use. Uh, that being said, that, you know, if the owner has the consent of PG&E for this and has consulted them, then there's really no reason for the city to want to prohibit that.
Okay.
Just, can I just ask a clarifying question of Mr. Murdock's, um, point or, or, or sort of suggestion? Was it the area that we were just talking about there? Again, that was supposed to be a planted area. That was the original proposal that it would be. So we, as talking about swapping out a planted area for a parking space.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Berman, please go ahead.
Um, that's all my questions for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Domarot.
Yeah, quick question. I, and I could be reading the property lines incorrectly, but that same area that we were just discussing was a great picture that was up there. But the southwest corner of the property seems to encompass the neighbor's driveway. Am I reading that correctly?
You are correct.
And has that portion of the property been ceded over to that?
There is a, there is an access easement, uh, for the neighbor.
Okay. So there's nothing that, that can be done to move the applicant's driveway a little bit to, to encompass a little bit more of that area, I guess, rather than going towards the downslope side?
No, no, we, we, we tried that and, uh, and we couldn't.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Domarot. Uh, Commissioner Hauser.
I just wanted to make sure I understood, um, what staff said about the adjacent property. So that, for that one where a variance was granted, you said, um, did I get it correct that the coverage was eleven point nine percent?
According to the records, I located, uh, the variance granted for seven twenty-two Talbot, the property immediately to the south, was eleven point nine percent, which on that site size was seven thousand nine hundred twenty-one square feet. Um, the staff report, uh, didn't have that information at that time, and I took a, an estimated measurement from an aerial photo. It was close, but not, not exactly the same figure.
Okay, so the coverage here is, that's being proposed is about twenty-eight percent. But you're saying that because the lot size was different, that it's about the same amount of disturbance?
Correct. The, the lot to the south at seven twenty-two Talbot is much larger than the lot in question with this project.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hauser, uh, any other, uh, questions or comments? I don't see any other hands, so I, I'm wondering if we, um, maybe we can sort of try to take stock of where we are or, or see if there's a, a motion that somebody, uh, might be willing or, or, uh, interested in making. I would be, um, interested in making a motion, um, along the lines of, of that recommended by, um, by staff. I, I would be interested in integrating, um, some of the, um, suggestions that, uh, came out of some of the, uh, question that we had and some of the, uh, well, indeed some of the recommendations from, uh, uh, Commissioner Berman, uh, regarding the, the parking. I, I would want to make sure that I was, um, picking that up correctly and describing what it was, uh, it was clear. I think the first thing was, um, there had been some interest or some willingness, and I guess maybe this isn't big enough to really incorporate into, uh, a condition, but the, the question about the trail, uh, and, and whether or not there's any way, given the, uh, applicant's, uh, to willingness to, to, to entertain some, uh, this will be continuing public access along that, uh, that trail. I, I don't know. I'll ask, I guess, uh, Mr. Murdock whether or not, or, uh, Mr. Redding, whether or not there's enough, uh, this or certainty around that. It sounded like PG&E had a role to play in that. We may not have enough information to, to do anything further with that right now. Is that, is that the case?
Um, I would have some concerns about the city imposing a new access easement. Now, if the public already had an existing access easement, obviously imposing conditions of approval to preserve that is something reasonable and within the city's powers to do. But we just don't, I think, know enough about the history of this, uh, public use to see if there's a implied public access easement due to the history of it. And additionally, I think the issues with respect to PG&E that were already raised are important to note.
I appreciate that. Um, so maybe I'll leave that to the side, then I'd come back to the issue of the, um, the parallel parking space and, um, now we might, um, add a condition of approval that would, um, require that. Is, Mr. Murdock, do you have any suggestions on, on how we might, um, frame that condition?
Well, I think at the outset, um, it would involve, uh, the commission making a finding through the motion that it, uh, is denying the variance and the parking exception for the HPD guest parking. And as a consequence of that, requiring through a condition of approval, the creation of the required guest parking space, um, in an approximate location to be described, subject to further review and approval of the planning director, I would suggest, um, in that, that front portion to the north of the proposed driveway.
And so the finding would be something along the lines of, you know, we've determined that, um, it's actually feasible, um, to include such a, such a parking space, recognizing it involves a trade-off, uh, with respect to lot coverage or with, well, maybe it doesn't, well, with respect, maybe it doesn't involve, it's just a different kind of coverage, I guess, is what we're talking about. In that we've opted for parking as opposed to, um, planting.
Correct. I think that's within the commission's discretion to balance those factors. Um, according to staff's analysis, there's ample, um, extra landscaping that's been provided to comply with the zoning, even with the reduction that the commission has, uh, is considering right now. And so that trade-off, uh, would be from one coverage type to another, as you noted, Chair Niblin, um, under the HPD. With respect to other zoning standards, it would be converting a percentage of the landscaping coverage, uh, a relatively small percentage in this case, to paving to provide that, that, uh, that parking space.
Thank you. Commissioner Berman.
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to, thank you, Chair Niblin, for, uh, moving forward with, with the concerns that other commissioners and I voice. I, I also want to mention, um, although I didn't discuss it, I, I do agree with items that Commissioner Hauser mentioned. Um, she honestly asked a lot of the questions that I already had, so I didn't really have a need to ask any additional questions. Um, I just, it, this one's hard to swallow for me a little bit. Um, and, and some major aspects that may be outside of the commission's control and staff's control that I would probably um, be more inclined to be supportive of the project on would be if we had some educational outreach or, or some town hall meeting, maybe a special meeting between Planning Commission and City Council that discussed more hillside preservation district aspects. Um, I think there's a lot of concern throughout the community and, and the commission is still kind of wrapping their heads around and truly becoming experts on each of the requirements. It, um, it would be nice to review this after we have that education period. Um, additionally, I don't feel comfortable supporting this project without having the vantage point views and understanding the visual impacts from, from the ridge, from the adjacent, um, roads. Um, it, this really, this property is right on the top of the ridge, so it, in my opinion, right now, without looking at any, uh, sightline perspectives, is that it's gonna stick out like a sore thumb. Kind of like the property adjacent to it, which, you know, I kind of looked around. You, you could see it from, from a variety of locations. And then also seeing, uh, a rendering of the home itself. So me personally, I could get a better understanding of its visual aspects, because this is a modern home that's being placed adjacent to not very modern homes. Um, so I just wanted to voice that, um, before we kind of came to making a motion, just so my commissioner, my fellow commissioners understood my, my standpoint.
Thank you, Commissioner Berman. Commissioner Hauser.
Um, I, I agree with what, um, Commissioner Berman, um, mentioned about potentially having like a joint meeting with council. It's not something that I had thought of, and I think it's a really, um, I think it could be a really good idea, because again, there's a lot going on this. Um, you know, if, if we're gonna take a vote on, I mean, I think I made myself really, really clear that if we're gonna vote on this one tonight, I probably wouldn't be able to get there. Um, but I think, you know, understanding, you know, the coverage next door, looking at some of the images that, um, Commissioner Berman has asked for. And then, um, you know, also maybe taking a closer look at, you know, the way percentages are awarded for outstanding design, um, in the ordinance, I think, I think maybe putting all of those things together, I could get there, but I think everyone probably understands that I'm not there right now.
Um, Commissioner, uh, Will, we haven't heard from you. I'm wondering if you have any perspective to share on this?
Sure. Um, I'm generally in favor of the project. I think a lot of the points raised, um, by yourself, Chair, are valid in terms of, um, the, the challenges with this lot and, and kind of what our scope of limitations are. Um, but I also do appreciate, um, Commissioner, um, Berman's comments around, given it, this, the prominence of this location, seeing sightlines and seeing what it's actually gonna look like on the hillside would, um, would help in, in ultimately my final decision. I agree, the site next to it can be seen in many locations, uh, across the city. And, uh, yeah, I have an opinion on, on that site, um, which I won't share. But, um, seen, seen renderings of what it would look like on the hillside, given that I think the, the intention of HPD was to, right, preserve the hillside. So if we can see how the, how the house looks on the hillside, um, and then add additional comments, um, given that context would be extremely helpful. So, um, kind of along the lines of Commissioner Hauser, like, I, I think I could get there tonight, but having those renderings with the views, I, I'd much, be much more comfortable, um, uh, continue this item and, and bring it back when we do those renderings to, to make a, a final decision.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, Commissioner Godwin, I'm looking for your, your views, compliments.
Yeah, my opinion is quite similar to Commissioner Leo's. It's, I think I'm in general favor of the project, but I don't want to build a, an eyesore on top of a ridge that's widely seen. So I think having the renderings before we make a decision would be preferable to, to having a vote tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Godwin. And, uh, Commissioner Domarot, I know, I know you shared some of your perspectives on it. I'll ask you to state it.
Um, I, I kind of feel the, the same, but we, we gotta take this into perspective. It's been three years, uh, with no requirement by the city for them to have to provide those. I think we, we owe these people a vote. It's been a long time and probably a lot of blood, sweat and tears to get to where they are today. Uh, there are some, you know, minor concerns. We, we brought a lot of that up, but, um, I would have no problem doing a vote, uh, this, this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Domarot. Um, Mr. Chavaria, you know, kind of had the opportunity here, kind of a mix of, um, of, of perspectives on, on all this. I'm curious about, you know, what you think it would take to, for example, um, generate some of the renderings that, um, some folks are expressing interest in, in seeing.
Uh, yeah, we can definitely prepare the renderings. It's, uh, it's a process, perhaps two to three weeks. We'll have to, eh, locate the proper vantage points, survey them correctly, so we can get the proper camera angle, uh, to get the true definition of the building. Um, and, and perhaps if I can make a small comment, uh, we were talking about the sloped roofs and the reason that we selected the, the flat roof. It was precisely with the idea, um, to minimize the bulk and the appearance. And we'll be happy to dress up the roof, the flat roof and incorporate some live roofs in there. Uh, so, and, uh, that would certainly minimize, eh, a lot of the visual impact. Um, how the building fits in the area. The area is rather eclectic. There is a, 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 a good number of different architectural components. And, and, uh, we are confident that we can make, uh, the building look very nice. Um, it has a lot of articulation, different breaks of materials. And if we incorporate a couple of strips, uh, of living roofs, um, that would probably soften up, uh, eh, the appearance of the building. But, um, again, if, uh, if a rendering is needed, uh, yeah, it will take a. the appearance of the building. But again, if, if a rendering is needed, yeah, it will take us, you know, two to three weeks to get ready.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chavaria. And I guess I, I just, I probably just sort of stay where I, where I think I am with respect to the current state of affairs. I, I don't think I'd be in favor of continuing the item to, until after we can have some sort of a joint meeting with council. We don't really control, frankly, you know, whether, whether council does or doesn't want to have a joint meeting, frankly, about this matter. But, but I, but I certainly understand the, the desire for some perspective and some, and some renderings. I, I do share generally, Commissioner Domarot's particular articulated view that I think, I think I could have been comfortable with the project as, as proposed. Having said that, I, it sounds like there may be a coalescing around the possibility of maybe continuing the item for a brief period to afford some opportunity to, to generate some of the, the renderings and the, and some of the additional analysis that commissioners have spoken to. And I'm wondering if staff could give us some sense of kind of what our calendar looks like here in the, in the near future to accommodate this, recognizing again that the matter has, has gone on for a while. But there are some concerns here that we want to sort of make sure that we fully address.
Sure. Thank you, Chair. The next opportunity, given the two to three week timeline, would technically be Tuesday, September 7. However, should there be any delays, and it would, I think, affect our ability to keep that date, given the agenda preparation timelines that we have. And I would feel much more comfortable with a September 20th date for the planning commission meeting.
Well, I guess I'd ask Mr. Chavaria and the Murphy's whether or not they'd be available on September 20.
I, I'm sorry, Commissioner, if I would be available or if we will be able to meet that submitted deadline?
Oh, well, I, I guess both those questions are relevant. Whether you'd be available on the 20th and whether or not you, you believe you all could meet the submitted deadlines for a consideration on the 20th.
And that would be two weeks prior to the meeting, Christian?
That would be, that would be ideal, yes.
Yeah, we can, I'll be available and yes, we can do that.
Well, okay, well, I think I would, Commissioner Will.
Chair, I just want to ask if, if it was up to our discretion to add some opinions as to the sightlines that we'd like covered as to like directional sightlines?
You know, Commissioner Will, thank you, thank you. That, you know, I think is, if we're going to continue the matter, we might as well be as comprehensive and specific as we can be about, kind of what would be, make it, would be useful to us as we, as we consider this matter further. So please share whatever you care to go on this line.
Sure, I'll, I'll start. So I think from the kind of the top of, well, we're basically, we're Sharp Park Road overseas to property. So either McCarthy out overlook where that parking is or somewhere along the road. But it's probably more feasible to do the McCarthy overlook, given that people will be parked there and overlooking the ocean from that vantage point. I would say on, on Talbot, looking up towards the house from kind of the turnaround would be ideal. Somewhere, I guess, down in the valley, more northwest in Shark, in kind of the East Shore Park area. I'm trying to zoom out of my Google map to better describe that area, but I don't know, where those, basically either Canyon Drive, Carmel Avenue, that neighborhood down there looking up. It could be at the end of Canyon Drive, perhaps looking up, given that those residents would be, I guess, closest. And then perhaps a vantage point from the Malaga Ridge Trail. So somewhere along the water ridge, perhaps directly north of, of that site, of the private site.
Thank you, Commissioner Will. Commissioner Berman.
I agree with Commissioner, Commissioner Leo. Those are kind of the areas I had in mind specifically. The Malaga Ridge and, and the parking outlook off of Sharp Park and then Canyon Drive as well. One thing I wanted to mention to staff, I personally will not be able to attend that planning commission meeting, but I will be able to attend the next one. Please don't make that the decision factor. I do not need to attend. So, but I just wanted to, to let everyone know that I won't be able to make that planning commission meeting.
Vice Chair Berman, it wasn't clear to me what meetings you were referring to specifically.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, that, that's my bad. Either meeting in September I will not be able to make. And, and I'll send you an email, Christian. I can make the October 4th. I, I will be able to attend that one. But again, as long as there's a quorum, I certainly don't need to be present.
Thank you, Commissioner Berman. And there was, and there was a little bit of a, Mr. Chavaria, I guess you'll take it upon yourself if there are design sort of elements or things that you've discussed some, some possible adjustments to, to roof and other things that, not, I guess we'll just a lot, you know, anything that you decide it would be useful in that regard, I guess you'll incorporate as well as the sightlines that we're talking about. So I'd be inclined, I guess, at this point to entertain a motion to continue. And I recognize that Commissioner Berman, you're unavailable in September. And with, with all respect, I'd, I'd like to, to try to do this in September, late September, if possible. So I, I, I myself would be willing to make a motion to continue this item to September 20th for, for the various reasons and depending the various items of information that have been articulated by the, by the commission. So that, that would be my, my motion. And I'll ask if there's a second, Commissioner Godwin.
I'll second your motion.
So we have a motion to continue on the second. Can we get a roll call?
Commissioner Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domarat.
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser.
Yes.
Commissioner Leo.
Yes.
Commissioner Niblin.
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. So we will revisit the item on, on the 20th of September then. And that then will take us to our communications and we'll start with commission communications. Are there any commission communications? Commissioner Berman.
Thank you. I'm wondering, Mr. Murdoch, is it at all possible or within our purview to request a joint meeting with City Council to review the HPD zoning districts?
It's difficult for me to tell what a majority of the commission wants on that point. Certainly some members have been vocal. The commission doesn't set the agenda with the city council, and so I can relay the concerns as I've heard them and understand them from some of the commissioners to the city manager for his information and allow him to, to work on that issue and to address it as he sees appropriate with the city council.
Thank you. Just something to consider. At minimum, it would be great to have a town hall meeting or, I don't know, nowadays, I guess it would be a webinar. But I think we're all kind of looking for, for something.
Understood. I think, you know, the key concern I was relaying is that having it at a planning commission meeting would be unusual. And it, I think, presents some potential problems with respect to other projects that are pending with respect to their records. I stand behind that comment. I've at no point disagreed that getting information to the community is important. But I think we need to be careful and thoughtful with the method of delivering that information and whatever conversation might unfold, as well as balancing this issue with the whole host of other issues that the council has already put on the city's work plan. And recognizing we have finite time and resources to accomplish all of those. And so that's part of the issue that the city manager will have to consider when I relay the commission's feedback on this point.
And I, I will sort of, Deputy Director Murdoch does raise an important point that, you know, to the extent that there are projects that are still within the potential for appeals or are being appealed, you know, having the council weigh in on those matters in advance of the appeal hearing is potentially problematic for due process reasons. And so for that reason, you know, you wouldn't necessarily want to have a public meeting where council members are asked to opine on their positions on projects in advance of providing those particular applicants or appellants. If, you know, you have an appeal to challenge a project, you know, their opportunity to make their case first.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Berman. Any other commission communications? And we'll move to our staff communications.
Thank you, Chair. The main thing I want to announce this evening is the planning department has hired a new staff member. She started today. Her name is Zoe Cavolo. She is our new assistant planner, and I look forward to an opportunity to introduce you to her at an upcoming planning commission meeting. She's coming out of graduate school at the University of Pennsylvania, and she brings an interesting background, primarily in research at some prominent institutions. I'll give her an opportunity to share her background with you at an appropriate time. But we couldn't be happier to have her on board and really look forward to getting her trained up and assisting with the interesting and cumulative amount of work that we have to do in the planning department.
Well, we'll thank the deputy director for that. Could you, could you repeat her name? I, I think I may have, I don't think I heard it.
Yes, Chair. Her first name is Zoe and her last name is Cavello.
Great. Well, we look forward to hearing from Ms. Cavello. It's great. We'll move then to adjourn, I guess. I'll ask if there's a motion to adjourn. Commissioner Leo.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Leo has moved to adjourn. Commissioner Berman.
I second.
Great. We have a motion and second, can we get a roll call?
Commissioner Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domarat.
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser.
Yes.
Commissioner Leo.
Yes.
Commissioner Niblin.
Yes.
And that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. You're adjourned. Everyone have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you, Commissioners.